Let's start with the roll call.
Councilman Daley?
Here.
Councilman Duper?
Present.
Councilman Peskew?
Here.
Mayor Pretend Free Linart?
Here.
Mayor Rigsby?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will begin with our invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Daley. Please stand.
Honorable members of the Senate, I would definitely thank you for the many blessings that you provide us. The privilege we have to live in this country and in this city. And we pray for our country with all of the chaos and confusion that's had on us. And we pray for the upcoming elections that they will go smoothly, both in our city as well as state and regional connections. And we must really thank you for the blessings you provide us. And we pray that you, if you're a citizen, can make the most appropriate decisions for our citizens. I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be added or deleted? No, sir. Thank you. Now is the time that we ask the public to participate by having comments on items not on the agenda. But we ask that the comments be pertinent or germane to city functioning and not just railing on topics of random type. So our first request for discussion is Dick Wiley.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, staff. I've got a question I just mentioned it to Phil when he came in. As of the end of the year, you get away with all the recycling centers and places. My question is now, where's the CRV tax going that you pay for bottles, cans, and that type of thing? As far as I know, they're still collecting it at the stores. I mean, we're taxed for it. But where is it going? Does the state keep it and keep it quiet and say, "We'll fund something over here"? We won't tell them, you know, you don't shake the tree because somebody will get mad. And I don't think it's fair, if you're not going to pay the recyclers, that there should not be a CRV tax and that, you know, the redemption tax. So if there's a way of finding what the answer is to that through here, I hope that maybe we can find something.
Yeah, but, excuse me, but the people that are collecting cans over here at the state of Brother Parking Lot, they went out of business.
Yeah, that's what it was for. They said, you know, help.
But there's still other company still collecting those.
Well, that's not what I'm hearing statewide. I've heard program on that SoCal Connection. It said all of them were gone. And even now, a lot of this, when the recycling, the waste companies come by, a lot of this goes right, once they leave your place and they get back to their dumping area, it goes right out in the trash. So this is why I'm saying we're losing money. Now, if it goes to the city, that's one thing. But a little perturbed about.
Well, the money definitely goes to the state.
Well, but what's the state doing with it?
Pocketing it.
Okay, that's an unfair tax.
That's what leftists do with money.
Yeah.
That's how they operate.
Just be up on board, not you guys, but everybody be on board and upfront.
How we always infuse national and global politics into a local city council meeting confuses me, but whatever.
Can you imagine a libertarian individualist continuing a tax for which there is no flow of funds?
I'm not even going to bite on that. I do have a question or a comment, though. I've had, I've been contacted by several people in my community asking the, not the same question, but people, including me, have bags of cans and plastic bottles stacking up in our garages. And they're asking me what to do with it. And so I agree with Dick. We need to provide some guidance on this.
I might have an answer for you.
Okay.
There's a website, Dick, I'll share it with you. It's called CalRecycle.ca.gov. And on this website, they, there's a recycling locator. So you can type in your zip code and it will give you locations that still do recycling. There looks to be about maybe three or four in San Bernardino, Rialto, few in Colton, yeah, maybe Highland, that's what it is. I'm looking at the map, but you're right, there's nothing in Redlands or Loma Linda. And then on the website also, they talk about the funds. And it says some of them go to competitive grants, some are curbside supplemental payments. And there's a section I think is interesting, you might be interested. It says, "Payments to cities and counties: $10.5 million per year for beverage container recycling and litter cleanup activities." So I wonder if we've got any of that. We don't get any of that kind of stuff? He's looking at me like, "Yeah, I'm crazy." So, must be LA that gets that $10 million, Dick.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, we'll proceed to item number one, which is a public hearing for community development block grant project prioritization.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just like every year, we receive the money from the County of San Bernardino, CDBG block grant, of which minimum of 15% can be used for public services projects. And this year, staff recommend the same three that we have been helping funding every year. That is Seminole County Library, Inland Temporary Home, and Family Service Association Do Business S FSD. And we have representative from all three agencies that can give you an update on how they're doing within the city of Loma Linda. And for the city project, we plan to do the upgrade, our ADA restroom building, and also the ADA sidewalk improvement throughout the city.
Okay, any questions for the staff before I start the public hearing?
I had a couple, but I'll wait until we get past the charities. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll open the public hearing. And we'll take discussions from anybody who would like to speak. But we have three requests, and I'll take them in the order they're presented. First is Tom Donahue.
Good evening, honorable Mayor, members of council and city staff. My name is Tom Donahue. I'm the program administrator for the Senior Nutrition Program for Family Service Association. Family Service Association is a multidisciplined organization that we provide service in the region, both Riverside and San Bernardino County, for ages zero to gray. I'm here as a proud representative for the gray community. And what we do in partnership with the City of Loma Linda, your senior center, we provide the meal program, the lunch program, at the center and have been since we took over for the Old Timers Foundation when they left the region. We serve approximately 140 unduplicated seniors annually and serve over 5,000 meals. But also, we serve seniors in your community that you don't see. These are your homebound seniors, the seniors that can't get out to the community. And we provide meals to them as well. Without your support, we won't be able to continue to grow our program. Through your support in past years, we've been able to add a day of service to the center. Whenever the city wants to keep open the city for a fifth day, we're prepared to provide that service, that one service, when the time is right and when the funding is available. Because the program need is growing. The senior population is one of the largest demographic factors that is growing into the state. And we need to be prepared for that, not just for meals, but addressing the health and wellness. This area as a blue zone is well positioned to be a leader in health and wellness education. We were talking with JARP about how can we implement the vegetarian options more countywide? How can we take the best example that we have here in Loma Linda and use it as a best practice? So we're looking with that with our registered dietitian of how can we change our program to make it better and stronger? And this is how partnerships work. We learn from each other, we leverage the dollars that you give with other dollars. 80% of our funding from our contract with the Department of Aging covers our base funding. 10% comes from client donations. The balance comes from the support for the communities with grants that we get from CDBG and other local community organizations. So we appreciate our partnership. We thank the staff for their recommendation to continue our funding. And we hope that you will consider their recommendation and approve our funding for the next fiscal year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on our program and what we do for your residents. All right, thank you.
The next comment is from Stan Sewell.
Honorable Mayor, city council members and staff, good evening. My name is Stan Sewell. I'm the branch manager next door at the library. Our address is 25581 Barton Road. I'm here on behalf of CDBG requests for library services and literacy program. I would also like to, you know, thank the council and the staff for their ongoing support for the library over these years and including our new floor that has just been installed. It looks very nice, it's like a showcase. I extend the invitation to come on down and see it. Also, to other members of the community to come on over and to see what the library has to offer. Speaking of what the library offers, tonight, what we're asking for is funds for free literacy services for the community. And also, to promote 21st century literacy skills through our computer class. We offer free tutoring in English language improvement skills that I sometimes need. But what we do is work one-on-one with participants and help them improve their English language reading comprehension and enunciation. And we do that meeting one-on-one here in the library. The library also offers everything from cradle to career, early learning programs for preschool-aged children, materials for reading, writing, math, spelling books, design for adults, English language improvement, US citizenship, materials for GED, TOEIC, and career materials. We also have Mango, which is an audiovisual program that people can learn English. And also, if you speak English, you can learn other languages through it. All this is free through tax dollars. We also offer programs and job coaching and job search resources. Last, I'm also reaching out to members of the community to help us with our literacy program. We're always seeking more tutors for our learners. So I would like to put that out there and say thank you very much. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
If my memory serves me correct, did you not retire or move on? And you introduced us to someone else's running the library a year ago?
I served for the county prefers me. So I was over at Fontana for two years, and I am back here.
Okay, that's what I thought. I'm like, wow, well, great, welcome back.
Thank you.
Yeah, welcome back. Thank you. Next is Jeff Little.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, city staff. I appreciate you having me. As you all know, I'm Jeff Little. I'm the CEO of Inland Housing Solutions, formerly Inland Temporary Homes. And I appreciate the city of Loma Linda. We've been a partner for, I think, close to 30 years now. And we're really grateful for all the support that you've shown to us, of course. The grant that we have applied for and been recommended for is a small match for our larger funding sources. Over the past five years, through our rapid rehousing model, I'll give you some numbers here. We have housed over 157 households, five years, consisting of 206 adults and 322 children. That's scattered site tenant-based throughout the county. Five-year average of a 93% success rate. And that means we actually do look backs at six months, 18 months, and two and a half years. So the goals, of course, are housing. Goals, of course, are housing, employment, for long-term self-sufficiency. Of course, we do that through case management, mental health services, you know, sobriety and long-term health is really a key indicator of long-term housing. We are doing well. We're very happy. We leased up the two office spaces over at Heritage Park. We love them, they're beautiful, we take very good care of them. And we're very thankful for the city and the improvements. I think it's going really fantastic. At least that's, I haven't heard anything otherwise. So that's, I'll keep it short, that's my time. But I just really appreciate it and look forward to a bright future. Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
It states here that you have options for individuals and families. What percentage of your family units that you described are individuals?
Very few individuals. We are, we have been a family organization from the very beginning, families with children. In fact, let's see here, I think I'm getting older, I need glasses. Let's see here, of those 157 households that I gave you, 128 of them were female heads of households. And typically, I don't have the breakdown here, but I could get it, but are single mothers. And so the percentage is very high. We're seeing a lot more unaccompanied women actually on the street. But to answer your question, I would say, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but if I were to guess, it would be, you know, 98% are families with children. And a good majority of those are single moms with children. We've tried to expand a little bit and be open to referrals, obviously, from our partners of individuals, they may come in contact that are on the street in their city. And we, if we don't have a solution for them, we know other agencies that may. And so we're trying to increase our warm handoffs and do a better job, quite frankly, of triaging. I mean, the whole point of rapid rehousing is quick housing, right? So the faster we can get them off the street into housing, the quicker we can start their treatment plan. That's the goal from day one. We actually time how quickly we can do it. That's a big part of the model.
Yeah, in the past, you reported to us it was about 90 days to 120 days on average that they're dwelling in your facility?
Yeah.
Is that still about the right number?
In the scattered site, it's actually about seven to eight months. So we've actually, because of the, you want to call them barriers or some of the issues households may have, we've actually gone a little bit longer. Because, you know, we want successful outcomes. We want households to be sustained and not be in and out of homelessness, right? So we're looking long-term. So we've actually extended that. I think the average is about seven months. The average number of days households receive rental assistance, seven months.
We're proud to have helped you over the last 30 years with families that are homeless. We're also proud of our interactions with the veterans housing community. So with our 86 new units for veterans, it's a very nice response that our community has had to this problem.
Absolutely, I agree.
Any other questions from?
Just to follow up, where do you get your referrals from as far as the families that you help? Who brings them to your attention?
So we are through MOUs with the county, of course. We are mandated to participate in the coordinated entry system. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that, CES for short. Most households that go through the CES are typically encountered by, you know, police department, sheriff's department, first responders. There are some outreach teams. We don't have an outreach team, but there are outreach teams. And that goes into a coordinated entry system. However, we can take a referral, we just have to revert, they call it a reverse referral through the coordinated entry system. We have to get approval. Very rarely do we not get approval. You know, the household has to meet eligibility requirements, of course. But if they do, and majority do, we get a pretty quick turnaround.
So if I understand you correctly, it goes through the county and the county actually helps process some of the referrals?
It is, it is a county mandate. But the CES is actually run by Inland Empire United Way off of, I think it's Hermosa in Rancho Cucamonga. So, yeah, Inland Empire, there's Arrowhead United Way, which is in San Bernardino, but, yeah, in Rancho. And they run the 211, if you're familiar with 211 system. They also operate the coordinated entry system.
So do you work closely with the whole program, with the sheriff's department?
Sheriff's Department, absolutely.
Okay, because I know they talked to us about their efforts to bring the homeless issue and give them resources. So I just wanted to kind of, I know we were doing that, I just couldn't remember all the details. So it's nice to know that there's all these efforts that have been going on. And that's probably one of the reasons why we probably have probably less homeless here in Loma Linda than other communities. We do have a number of institutions that are helping. So anyway, I appreciate your help and your input, thank you.
You're welcome, absolutely, thank you.
Good examples. Last week, a resident contacted me with a family, a lady with two children. And I went over to Inland Temporary Home. Within that same night, they have a place for them to stay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the topic of CDBG distribution? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And what's the pleasure of the council?
Couple of questions. The amount that we get, has it progressively gone more every year or has it pretty much remained stable?
No, it's actually go down every year.
Has it gone, okay. And it's pretty much all mandated by the state?
Yes.
That's coming down, so. In reference to sidewalk improvements, is it limited to ADA rehab or can it be applied for new projects as well? Meaning places that there is no sidewalks?
When there's no place and no sidewalk, it has to be a certain area. For example, right now, the, I'm going to call it low-income area is between Anderson and Shepperson, Benton and Anderson. I said Barton, I'm sorry, Barton, Barton. So that's why we did the pavement rehabilitation. We ran out of projects. So what we do is, we asked the lady at the county. She said, "As long as it's ADA compliant sidewalk or handicap ramps, we can do it anywhere."
When you say you're running out of projects, you're telling me that every city, every street in Loma Linda has a sidewalk?
No, no, within the area.
There's a limitation on, you have to use these funds in low-income areas?
Yes.
And we don't have any left?
The North Central is no longer.
We don't have any left because we're too rich a town for that.
And we have to have done improvement, to use the funding that they set aside for doing it. And we have done the improvement to increase the value of the property and that the purpose of the funding.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to, you'll move the staff recommendation? Okay, there's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Thank you. Next is a public hearing on Council Bill R-2020-03, determining the costs related to our fall weed abatement program. Fire Department.
Good evening, city council, staff and citizens. My name is Tom Ingles. I'm the fire marshal for the city of Loma Linda. I'm here to report on the fall 2019 weed abatement program. We, you have the report in front of you. But on September 30th, we began the first inspections of approximately 435 parcels. We sent that data back to our contractor to run it for us to mail notices to clean property on October 7th. The abatement deadline for parcel owners was on October 28th. After October 28th, I went and did our second inspections to see if the property owners had complied to the notice. And then November 4th, I got a map back to give to our contractor, West Services, to begin his abatement of the properties that were not cleaned. That took place between November 4th and December 17th. The contractor did approximately 19 parcels. Received invoices from the contractor on December 18th. And then we got notices sent out to the property owners to pay for the contractor cost, the administrative fee. There has been some updates to the list you see in front of you. We have had citizens come in and pay for the work completed by the contractor. With that being said, there were a couple discrepancies on the invoicing this year on two parties. They didn't receive their invoice in time. So I'm requesting that we continue the public hearing until March 10th. So they have due time to go ahead and pay the invoice, have proper, you know, notification that they have their due process to come and make a public hearing.
You're asking us to continue this item for?
March 10th.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So the full amount, because there's a few?
Yes, so there was a few discrepancies on the invoice. I want to make sure those citizens have the proper time to pay the invoice as well as, you know, have proper notice that they can come in for a public hearing on March 10th.
Okay, I think we still have to do a public hearing because it was noticed for today.
Yes, sir.
And whether or not we would have a second public hearing would be told to us by our attorney.
Well, yes, you're correct, Mr. Mayor. You would take any testimony of those who are here today to speak on the items. But the hearing would then be continued to the next meeting for that purpose, to complete the action.
Okay. Any questions of?
I've been looking at these reports for quite a number of years now. The range seems to be much broader this year in terms of the contractor cost. Anywhere from 17, or $70 to $3,690.
Yes, sir.
Is that because of the size of the property or the density of the weeds?
Yes, sir.
Or what?
So this season, when I took a step further, yeah, to your answer to your question, yes. It's the size of the property, so his man-hours to complete that work. But also, the fire hazard, because of the winds, we, a lot of the properties in town, the vacant land, had a lot of overgrowth in the trees. So our contractor went in. It was noted on their violation notice to the property owner that they had to trim up their trees up to six feet. When they didn't comply, we went ahead and take the step to get those trees and the fire hazard cleared on those properties, not just abating the weeds, but also taking care of the fire hazards with the trees.
I'm sure that was the bulk of the cost?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Because I can't imagine a property big enough to be a $6,200 mow job.
No, sir, no.
The other thing that looks a little different to me from previous years is without counting, approximately half of the properties are owned by some type of corporation or enterprise as opposed to individuals.
Yes, sir. I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, the individuals. Some time ago before I took over this position, there was that administrative fee that was passed, the 70% or $100, whichever is greater. So I think that motivated a lot of individual property owners to take care of their own weed abatement so they don't have to pay that administrative fee. With some of these corporations, you know, when we sent out the notice, all that information is through the county assessor's office. So whatever address they have on file with the county assessor, that's where that violation notice is sent to. So it can come down to a myriad of things of why maybe they, it gets lost in paperwork between all the employees or something like that.
I'm guessing some of these are corporations that just believe that it's a cost of maintaining the land and let the city deal with it and pay the bill.
Could be, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Why does, like, the same individual appears three times, same address, same fee, same date ordered, same day debated? The only difference is the APN. Is it three different properties?
Yeah, it's really weird how some of these people, they, or how the properties are subdivided. So, yeah, it's an individual APN, so then we have to bill that parcel and APN separate. We can't just group it all together and say, "Okay, we have to break it up by APN." So that property owner knows, "Okay, I got this fee for this piece of my property, this fee for the other piece of the property I own." Just the way the county had divided that parcel.
So their address of record is? So their address of record is, is obviously not, because there's some that aren't Loma Linda, obviously, so.
Yes, sir.
Kind of be nice to know, I guess, if we could see the actual address. Can we see that?
Of the, well, some of these properties don't have addresses. They're vacant land. So that's why we go by the APN number.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they don't have physical addresses.
Alright, thanks.
I know last year we had a, we had an appeal based on the price. I've noticed the prices have gone up considerably. They used to be, a lot of them, under $100. And now it seems like there's only one. And the testimony we got from the appellant last time was that his property, he could mow it easily in 15 minutes or something. It was like $250 to mow.
Yes, sir.
Is our, I asked this last time, is our contractor reasonable?
He is reasonable.
It seems expensive. Yeah, but 15 minutes is not $200.
Yeah, but his contract, he gets a minimum per parcel. He can't charge by 15-minute increments, so he gets a minimum. And then on top of that, I am, because of that last testimony that happened, I am holding our contractor more accountable where he has to send a bunch of before photos of the same property and then exactly what he did, a bunch of after photos, and then every invoice. Instead of just giving me a price, he has to give me a summary of exactly what he did. So that's the further step I took this season because of that testimony, to make sure that we're holding him accountable. So there's a bunch of digital evidence of what he did on the abatement on the property as well as a summary of exactly why he's charging each fee.
Couple of follow-up questions. Lately, I've had an opportunity to spend some time in some neighborhoods and it's come to my attention that some yards are in just terrible shape. The decision as to whether someone constitutes a violation, is it mostly related to your interpretation that it's a fire hazard? Or does it have to go beyond that?
No, sir. It comes with fire hazard and it falls in the fire department's jurisdiction and authority. For like a lawn that's overgrown, that would be more of a public nuisance and that'd fall more in code enforcement. These properties are big, you know, acreage of land that can cause a significant fire danger. But that's not to discredit, you know, someone's lawn overgrown, but we kind of let code enforcement handle that aspect.
I talked to Conrad about this particular property, but it's in front of the Marriott Hotel, the vacant piece of land.
Yes, sir.
That's become way overgrown and I'm just curious as to why that hasn't been addressed either by us or the property owner.
Are you speaking of the one on the corner of Richardson and Reynolds Boulevard, sir?
No, not the corner, but the one on the other side of the car wash, between the car, the truck repair place and the Marriott.
Oh, okay, so that the old drive-in property?
No, nope.
Okay.
It's on Richardson.
It's on Richardson. It's Richardson on the west side, right in front of the Marriott.
Across the street from?
There's no strip.
The theater property.
Yeah, it's across from the VA property. It just surprises me that that wouldn't be on this list. Obviously, they haven't taken care of it.
Those kind of code enforcement things aren't part of the list. And typically what we do is, and this is about the time of the year when the weeds start coming up, is we'll cycle through and basically drive.
If he doesn't do it, we'll see it in three months.
Yeah, we'll, we'll drive every street and check every, and then we do this two or three times a year and it's about time for us to do it again. With all the rain and now things are starting to pop again.
Yeah, we've had quite a bit of rain lately, so.
And just to clarify, sir, a second, I can also follow up on that. It is a vacant land or is it?
Yeah, it is vacant. Yeah, it's completely.
Across from the drive-in theater.
Yeah, it's across.
I know I hit that.
It's on west side of Richardson, yes. It's gone quite.
It's the vacant lot they're going to build the next hotel on, so.
Yeah.
Oh, he, yeah, so that's how that, the system works. So he did, he did receive a violation notice. He actually has a, his own separate contract with this individual that we have with the city. So he makes arrangements when he makes, gets his violation notice, he has this individual take care of it for him, so.
He's in that window right now.
What's that?
He's in that window of complying with your notice, then.
Yes, sir. So when I went and did my second inspection, it was completed. So I don't forward that to the contractor, you know, I, I don't want to waste.
I guess maybe I was driven by it the other day and it must have been good, but.
Yeah, and that's why, so just, just so you know, we do this biannually, so this was for the fall.
Okay.
And now we're getting in the spring, we'll do the first inspections into March. And that's usually, you know, hopefully towards the later part of the rain season.
On this list, but I was using this opportunity to point out that that property feels like it's been neglected for quite some time. And I just thought maybe this is an opportunity for us to agree.
It is on my hit list, yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Is there anyone here who would like to speak on this topic? Four people in the audience, no takers. So we will continue the public hearing to the next meeting. And also the vote on establishing the rates.
So do you want a motion to continue the item?
Yes, to the specific date.
Okay. Which would be, what's in a council meeting, March what?
March 10th.
March 10th. Okay, so I make a motion to move this item to March 10th.
Okay, the motion is to continue this item to March 10th, including the public hearing. So do we need to do any noticing of the public hearing for that date or is?
It was previously noticed for tonight. That's why when we continue it from tonight, that notice remains valid. The invoices that had an issue will be given additional notice.
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We'll move to our consent calendar. Okay, there's a motion and a second for the consent calendar. Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. We have item number 11, Old Business, Council Bill O-2020-01. And this is trying to annex our own property so we don't pay the county taxes on it.
This is a second reading and roll call vote of the pre-zone for the area that we're trying to annex of our own property, as the mayor said. And then we would basically, just to refresh, this is property that we own. We need to give it some type of zoning so the LAFCO can pre-zone it and bring it into the arts, into the city limits. Then we no longer have to pay the property tax to the county.
Okay, so the appropriate motion would be to move this, do we have to move this? Move the second reading and roll call vote?
And.
By title only?
Yes, wave reading and direct clerk to read by title only.
I'll move Council Bill O-2020-01, wave reading by title only to annex this parcel.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Comment?
You can comment.
Hi, is my geography off or, it says generally located east of Whittier and west of Mountain View. It's the outsides, right? Shouldn't it be west of Whittier and east of Mountain View?
Good catch.
Good call.
We just, we just annexed.
That's why we have a second reading.
We just annexed the whole universe except for the property.
Yeah, we kind of, we took the zones outside.
I'll amend my motion to include Dr. Leonard's comments.
We don't have to go back and do a first reading all over. Yeah, yeah.
It is entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Modifying the Official Zoning Map of the City of Loma Linda to Pre-Zone an Area Generally Located West of Whittier Avenue, East of Mountain View Avenue, North of the Riverside-San Bernardino County Line, and South of Beaumont Avenue to Hillside Conservation for approximately 374 acres and Low and Low Density Hillside Preservation for approximately 290 acres for the purpose of future annexation of the unincorporated area into the City of Loma Linda's city limits. And you may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
It was a hard-fought campaign, but it passed. Okay, New Business, item 12. I will open the housing authority so we can have a joint meeting to consider these two bills.
Very briefly, I know you're familiar with the project on Juanita Street with Mary Erickson Housing. The, basically, Mary Erickson was given the scattered sites throughout the city to sell and then to create an affordable housing project over on Juanita Street, which they have done. They've gone through the planning process, the zoning process, and are ready to begin construction. As they started their, their construction costs and getting contracts, what happened is the price of construction has increased over the last two or three years since this has started. So what the amendment to this is, is that they will not build the entire project. They will leave the two lots on the edges fallow for future, future construction and will build as much as they can afford at this time. Other than that, the conditions, the agreement and the terms stay the same. Any questions?
I had a question related to the purchase of the properties from us. I noticed that there's construction on one of those properties now on Mountain View. Is that an affordable housing unit?
No. No, those, those properties were sold as market rate.
Okay.
And we've had a couple of projects come in on, to have those, those properties developed. And that was the plan all along. And then the affordable, the affordable then is built over on Juanita in aggregate. Because Mary Erickson also has to, over the term of the life of the project, provide management and support for that. And they can't, it's really hard to do in scattered pieces and it becomes economically unfeasible.
And if I'm not, if I'm ever sure to be correct, they're the same ones that built our senior project on Poplar Street?
No, that, I'm trying to remember the outfit's name. What's? Charlie's outfit.
Ah, okay.
No, Mary Erickson owns an apartment, they bought an apartment building.
They competed for that at the time, maybe, with Charlie Farmback, maybe.
They, Mary Erickson, I believe, no, that was a different outfit.
Okay.
But they tend to specialize in smaller projects.
Okay.
They own a small project on Coal Street. I think it's eight or 10 units of an apartment building and are doing the same thing. So that's kind of their niche, is these smaller, these smaller projects. And they have management that does share them between the two projects.
Very good. Thank you.
I've read the staff report, but, and I heard your, your description, but we've got a plot of land and there's going to be six units on phase one, six units phase two?
No. No, there's six, six total. So they will build four and leave two fallow. So the two lots on the end will be left vacant for the time being. And then as funds come, come to, are available in the future, same thing as we did with the West Poplar. We build a first phase and then at some point, as housing funds become available, we'll build a second phase. The land will be retained by Mary Erickson. It will only be available for low-income housing. It can't be sold or shifted into some other use.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion. Do we need to read both the bills since we're two different committees at the moment?
They're word for word the same. And you can wear two hats at once.
Okay. I move them both. Do I need to read the number and so forth?
You can reference the bill numbers as stated in the staff recommendation.
So I move LLHA Bill R-2020-01 and Council Bill 2020-02.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Next, we have reports of councilmen.
I have a couple items. Couple months ago, I brought to city council how my sister-in-law was visiting and was walking the dog between the two housing tracks and complaining about all the dog poop and all that. She, I brought to city council and she came back recently after a couple of months. She goes, so I was walking the dog. And I go, oh, no, here we go. And she says, and it's so nice. It's all cleaned up and they have stands out there with a dog, you know, the bags and all that stuff. And so I thought, well, that's good. City council works. So I just want to commend you guys for getting that.
But with her, you took full credit for.
I did. I said it was totally me, that I had everything to do with it.
Yeah, it would have never happened otherwise.
No, never. And then another thing, I woke up this morning and there was a text from one of my colleagues who says, I left a present for you on your office doorknob. And also just, I was afraid it was one of those dog things. He's also just hypothetically, I went, if I went around throwing trash in everybody's driveway, I'd be fined for littering. But if a corporation can do it, it's okay. So I think he was referring to the, and what was on my, my office door was the Yellow Pages. So I think what he's referring to, can, can anybody just throw anything on anybody's yard? And, I mean, I've had it before where I heard a crash against my garage door and I went out there and there's a little bag with some rocks in it and advertisement for a gardening company, you know. Is, do people have to get permits to do anything like that? Or they just throw them out? Is that okay or what?
Because I got one tonight. It's a telephone book.
Telephone book.
Yeah, yeah.
Theoretically, that is littering. I mean, there's, there's just no way for us to enforce something like that.
Yeah, it would be problematic to even adopt an ordinance because of the First Amendment implications.
And most of the time, they throw it on the public right of way in the first 15 feet. Your garage is too close to the street.
Build a mansion, you get gophers.
The other thing, I drive by Bryn Mawr Park the other day and it looks like it's kind of overgrown and kind of really needs some help down there, across from the basketball court. Across from the basketball court as you're coming around down under the, under the bridge by La Loma. That little park, isn't that Bryn Mawr Park? Yeah, that.
Yeah, it's the Veterans, Bryn Mawr Veterans Memorial Park.
Really needs some help. It's kind of overgrown and just looks a little, you know, like I wouldn't want to go there and, you know, hang out, so, yeah, thanks.
And just on the same theme, I've had several people ask me about the various medians in the city. We're seeing more and more weeds and, and even coming up over the bridge on Mountain View with the winds and stuff, all kinds of junk has been collected in there. I don't know if we have regular sweets, street sweeping through there or how that works. Oh, okay. Anyway, from, from the surgical hospital coming this direction, coming west, it's looking pretty weedy in some places again now, too. So just passing that along.
Yeah, I had two comments regarding traffic and one general announcement. I'll just get the general announcement out of the way. Some of you may have been reading the paper, but we are moving the airshow from November to May. And we're combining it with the Redlands Airshow. Various reasons, obviously, our airport is growing significantly and because of that, we're not going to be able to accommodate it back in November. Which is a good problem to have because a lot of jobs can be created. Some of those jobs may be for even people that may be in the audience. But anyway, that's a different point. The, regarding traffic, on Mountain View, we widen the road, but it feels like it's taking a very long time to get it striped. Am I missing something?
We, we're not done yet because we have to replace the traffic signal. And, and it's take a long time to get the, the traffic signal pole and, and equipment. So it's here now, we're working with Caltrans to try to close down the freeway off-ramp. And we plan to do it on Monday, but it's too windy, too windy.
Wow, so it's coming up soon.
And Caltrans will let me, so. We are in the works still.
I think you might have mentioned it to me, but I might have forgotten. But now that a lot of the housing on, off of California is actually getting residents in it, how close are we to actually starting to put some traffic signals, especially as it relates to citrus? Or not citrus?
Orange.
Orange, yes.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I have been talking to the, the now home last week.
Okay.
The way that we conditioned him to decide is that they're going to widen three. The way that we conditioned him to decide is that they, they're going to widen three corner.
Okay.
The, the west side of the street, California and, and Orange, and the southeast corner of, of California and Orange. I have been working on the design for widened California street from Orange all the way to, to Redlands Boulevard, and have been working with the property owner, and I got a property owner, Laura Ramirez, willing to dedicate three pieces of property that they own, uh, to the city for free, and we do the improvement, of which one of them is at the northeast corner of California and Orange. So I, I call, the traffic signal is, is being designed right now for that corner.
Okay.
And I ask, uh, Leonard home to hold off on the, order the traffic signal pole, so that we have to order a new one with a longer mast, mast arm, so we can get the improvement at a corner completed at the same time.
So do you have a time, timetable for that?
It, it will be done this fiscal year.
Oh.
Yes, yes, yes.
So at that point, that's when we're gonna, uh, cut off mission?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
One more thing, speaking of traffic lights, this is probably Caltrans, but I had a couple of people saying, when they come to work every day, they come west, westbound on the ten, and get off on Tippy Canoe, and they're turning left to come here, right? So they barely can get under the bridge, and they have a hard time getting a, for out from under the bridge, across Redlands Boulevard, because all the eastbound traffic is getting off the freeway, and continually turning right in front of them, and they can't get through it. It's, that's probably Caltrans, but it seems like.
It's, it's Caltrans, City San Bernardino, we actually have to work on our end, we have to work at just our time to match their.
Yeah, it seems like something could be done with the synchronization of the lights or something, I don't know, maybe it's been fixed.
It's a perpetual problem because of drift. There's a drift in the timing, plus there is a demand function in the left turn lanes that changes everything each cycle. So it's really difficult to coordinate that.
Well, we just have to keep working on it, because I have, I've been a little bit frustrated the last few times I've gone over Anderson at four thirty, traffic is getting backed up all the way over the bridge, and I just think that, uh, that hasn't been always an issue, and it seems to fluctuate as we try to re-sync the lights, so. Because part of the reason we did the typical interchange was to decrease the amount of, uh, traffic that was backing up, so a lot more cars to go through, and this is, it seems like the bottleneck is happening right at, uh, at the freeway interchange. And I know every time we bring it up, it's always, well, it's Caltrans, whatever, so we need to work a little more closely on making sure the synchronization's right.
Wait, I, I'm wondering if there's any possibility of going to more of a retro approach, because there used to be systems where there would be a camera that would watch the light, and when it turned green, then it would time our light to match that, because we're trying to keep a consistent time. And the people coming out of Costco, going under the freeway to turn left onto the eastbound ten, it's so variable, the demand for that left turn, that it completely messes up the timing of the green for the, for the straight ahead on the northbound. So I'm wondering if there's some kind of a system where we can wait until that thing turns green, and then wait ten or fifteen or twenty seconds to let the proximal Redlands Boulevard intersection turn green, so that it gives time to clear the, the block, so that our traffic can actually flow. Because that's the entire essence of the problem there, is that block fills up, and our green light happens when there's no empty spot in that block to go to. So let's check, and I'll, we'll talk about it, but there's got to be a way to adjust to the different demand for left turns. Okay, uh, I have, uh, I've been speaking to citizens, and I'm getting a lot of complaints about our larcenous, um, top-tier water rates, um, that are really, um, uh, people who own larger lots feel that we're discriminating against them, and they're, it's more than doubled their water bills. Uh, one of our constituents was complaining that his water bill was over two thousand dollars each cycle, because he has a large lot in the wildland urban interface zone, and he's trying to water it to prevent wildfires from traveling to his house and to the rest of the, uh, community. My question is, can we revisit those water rates to reconsider, or to add some kind of a size of lot, um, adjustment?
How's that discrimination?
Well, if you, if you look at the rates, the rates used to be a small.
It's a progressive rate.
It is a progressive rate, but it's, it's, it's rapidly progressive, where it used to be slowly progressive. So for example, the rate used to have the lowest rate for this much use, and then a medium rate for that much use, and then the high rate beyond. And what's happened is, the low rate is extremely small, the, the medium rate is extremely small, and the high rate, which is much higher than it used to be, is everything else beyond that. So if you have anything beyond a minimal lot, you're in rate three for ninety-five percent of your water usage. And it's, and it's quite a bit more expensive than it used to be. I don't know if, if our intention was to have everybody who has a large lot move out of town, because that's what's happening.
You need to campaign in a different part of the town.
Well, I campaign all over, but, but this is where the complaints are coming from. And it does seem a little bit unfair not, not to adjust it, because the purpose of it is to get people not to overwater. And there are lots of people who do overwater, I'm, I'm shocked, I go out in the rain and there's sprinklers running. So I don't know why that happens, and I think we should probably look at our, at our automatic re- uh, readers and find out who's sprinkling during rain showers, and, and give them a little nudge, you know? A little tap on the shoulder, this is probably a waste of water. But, uh, I, I think the purpose was to get people not to overwater, not to get them to sell their house and move out of town, because that's what's happening. I would like to look at that again, to see if there's a way to adjust those rates. I did give them the suggestion that you can put in two meters for your house. One for irrigation, which is a lower rate, but it's only about, it's only about twenty to twenty-five percent lower. It's not down back to the old rate. Plus, it costs, uh, at least a couple thousand dollars to put in another meter, so there's an investment that you have to spend there to save. But I just think we should look at this again, because I think we, I think we overshot a bit on that approach. So just for a future council meeting, I'd appreciate that. Any reports of officers?
I want to make sure that we adjourn this meeting to next meeting, which is on February twenty-fifth, because I would like to do the media budget review. And we have meeting with the budget committee on February twentieth, and then we just bring it back to the city council on the twenty-fifth.
And that's a Thursday? Okay, the, the twentieth is the workshop. And then the meeting is the twenty-fifth, okay. Okay, that's noted, any other reports of officers? Okay, then the city council is adjourned, and we will go back to our housing authority, which we started earlier. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Would the public like to make any comments regarding the housing authority? No takers, then we move forward to our consent calendar. Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion, hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Uh, item three was taken care of earlier, any chair or member reports? Any reports of officers, hearing none, the housing authority is adjourned. Next is our successor agency, any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on items not on the agenda? Seeing no takers, how about the consent calendar? Okay, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion, hearing none, any opposition? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously, and we are adjourned. That concludes the proceedings for this evening, thank you for coming.